Good evening. Why don't you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance to God? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll have our workshop, the second meeting of the month, and turn it over to Joe to start the presentations.
So we're very excited this evening to have Deb Ayers, Jen Hekkerthorn, and John Wozniewski here. They were the educational consultants that were working with the district, with our Facilities Committee on funding improvements and building the future. And they're going to walk us through their findings and some recommendations that they have. So we're excited about engaging in conversation, so certainly ask Deb questions along the way if they bubble up or other members continue, but without further delay, I'll turn things over to you, Deb.
Thanks, Joe. It's our pleasure to be here and share a little bit about the work that we did. We're going to keep this at a high level tonight because, as I understand, that you had the full comprehensive report, you had the PowerPoint ahead of time. So I'm imagining that you had a chance to work your way through that, and that way we will allow a bit more time for questions without impeding into the rest of your agenda for the work session. I thought maybe we should start just for those of you that may not know me or my colleagues here. I'm Deb Ayers. I'm retired. I served at OCMBOSI for 17 years as the Assistant Superintendent for Administration. Prior to that, I worked in two different districts as a business administrator and started my career way back as a classroom teacher. So about 40 years of education. Dr. Jen over here, what would you like to say?
My name is Jen Hekkerthorn. I have a PhD from Syracuse Teaching Curriculum, former middle school teacher, professional involvement provider, and school district administrator.
And I'm John Wozniewski. I'm a retired director of facilities, spent the last 20 years for Solvay and remain 19 at OCMBOSI, working with that mechanical engineer by school and did some other things prior to becoming a director of facilities.
Just a bit of history, I think, because I think it's important to acknowledge the work that the prior committee did. In 2018, roughly, the district established the Funding the Future Committee, very similar structure to what we had for this work that we did. Representatives from all facets of your community and your school community got together, had meetings, and prepared a report in October of 2019 that was delivered to the district. Lots of good ideas and conversation and thoughts in there, and then implementation of some of those things had commenced, and then COVID struck. So the work really of that committee came to a screeching halt as the district dealt, as we all did, with all of the ramifications of that. So fast forward a little bit. When the dust somewhat settled from that, the district knew it was important to begin that work again or pick up on the work that was done prior. So our team was engaged in early of 2023, and the district then developed its committee that it worked with, that we worked with, against a model where there was a variety of stakeholders. There were teachers, administrators, community members from pretty much all walks of life, some with parents or some with children, some without. And we met for the next six or eight months, and then Jen and John and I took that input along with what our experiences have told us and came back, wrote our report, and we're here to share it with you tonight. So one of the things, one of the tasks that the district had in front of it when it started this work and changed the Funding the Future title for the committee to Funding Improvements and Building the Future, so kind of expanded upon that. But one of the things that the task that the district had was to develop this critical question. This is a question that we reviewed with the committee at each meeting. It helped the three of us stay on track when, you know, as we're discussing various things, we might start to wander a bit. But this brought us back to what is the purpose of this committee. So this was developed by the district, and the critical question is there on the screen. Are there grade-level building and instructional options that may provide more effective, relevant, and efficient pre-K through six, or in other words, elementary programming for students within the Baldwinsville district over the next decade? So that really kept us on task. Next thing we'd like to share with you is a bit about the meeting schedule. We met with the committee. The committee met, let's see, seven times. No, we didn't meet in August, but so six times. At each meeting, we rotated the sites. We met in the five elementary buildings plus at Ray for the last meeting. And we started with a building walk-through. Those were optional for the committee members. Many of them may have been familiar with the particular building. Other buildings, they may never have been. Maybe their children didn't, you know, attended, didn't attend there. They just weren't familiar. So those were optional meetings. We walked through each of those buildings. Rick was there at every single one of them, as well as the building principal. And so they were our tour guides, if you will, through those, through the buildings. And we debriefed after those, that hour of time spent at each meeting with what did you notice and what do you wonder about? And you'll find those in the appendix of the full report if you haven't had a chance to get to that yet. Then we worked through the following two hours. So it's a three-hour commitment that these folks have made to the process. There is a topic that you can see up there that we talked about at each of the meetings and then tried to allow what was important for us is to allow time for the committee to process the information. We were the providers of information for the most part, but then we wanted to make sure we gave the committee time to process through what we were sharing with them. And they were very clear about that was something that was important to them as well. We'd also want to thank those folks who did give a lot of time. You just heard me talk about the three hours each of the scheduled meeting times, but beyond that, you know, they had homework, if you want to call it that for lack of a better term, because as we told them, they're our eyes and ears in the district. You know, we hope that they would go and share the information that they learned or they heard about and with others, solicit thoughts, opinions of those folks that they talked to, and then bring them back and share them with us and with the rest of the committee. So the slide there, I just wanted to make sure we acknowledged the work that they all did, and we could not have done this without them. Would not have been the quality of product that it ended up being. So what I'm going to do with the findings. So the findings are generally factual things that we observe, data that we came across as we, as we work through it. I'm just going to try to highlight some of them and not read every one to you. If I'm going too quickly or if you have questions, please, please interject, okay? And we're happy to do that throughout the way, throughout the presentation, and then there'll be time at the end as well for further questions. The findings are broken down, and we put the headings on them pretty much that align with the meeting topics. So the first thing we talked about was enrollment. And I think what you want to remember here, particularly finding two and three, well, there's been a declining, historically declining enrollment. That's a K-12 number. So because when this started, when we go back five years to look at the six years to look at the historical data, there was no pre-K program at all. That came in the middle. So when you see that decline, and there was a decline in enrollment, that does not include your pre-K program, which is why we're specific there in talking about your K-12 enrollment. We looked at some of the national trends. We looked at some of the regional trends, and there is nothing, I guess the big takeaway and trying to put them at that high-level look, the big takeaway on enrollment, it is at this moment, there is nothing to indicate that the enrollment, there's reason to believe it will dramatically increase, but as you'll see down there in finding nine, the committee spent a lot of time talking about the whole micron factor, as we began to call it. We tried, I tried to meet with different people, talk to different agencies out there, and at the end of the day, it was very hard, virtually impossible. There was just no data out there that would try to help us quantify this and say it's going to, we project it's going to increase by 5% or 6 or 8 or 10, whatever it might be. It's just not there. So we proceeded with the committee, basically with the acknowledgement that we believe there will be an impact. How significant that impact is remains to be seen and something that will need to be monitored over the next few years. The next area is the instructional program. I think finding eight is important to, this is where the pre-kindergarten program started. This was something the committee felt strongly about, that it was extremely positive for the district to have the pre-kindergarten program and felt very strongly about continuing and expanding that program as, as desired or as needed. Things in the Baldwinsville, instructionally, things are either at or above the statewide averages for your measuring, measuring your academic successes. I think finding 11 is worth noting. The district is becoming, based on the data we looked at, increasingly more diverse. There's some buildings that have higher levels of poverty and non-white students. Those are, that's all data that the State Education Department expects every district to track. So that becomes, I think, important as you consider one of the recommendations here in a few minutes. Looked at a variety of instructional pieces. Chronic absenteeism, class sizes are pretty consistent across your elementary buildings. And again, remember, the focus is on your elementary programming. It, of course, by nature of the beast, I guess, bleeds over a bit into your junior and senior high, but for the most part, we looked at your elementary programming. And generally speaking, finding 15, I guess, says it pretty well there, is there's really no identifiable pattern that would be of concern as we looked at the data. So moving to the facilities section, we, Baldwinsville, I think, has done an excellent job of acknowledging that there needs to be a plan for facilities, and I mean, this work is all part of that. You've been proactive. You've acknowledged that there's long lead times on these, on these things. And so we looked at the building condition survey. We looked at the annual visual inspection, as well as the work that the district has done as far as identifying various instructional needs and what do you need from your facilities to support that. Things I've had, I have asterisks in my notes, is number 18. This is not something that is true of all of the buildings in which I've done work, but what we found here is that we could not find space in the buildings we've visited. We could not find space that was unused. And in fact, the opposite is true, is that spaces were being used that were perhaps either undersized or inappropriate in some way for the program that it was housing. So there was no, just no, no space that's just sitting there waiting to be occupied. Something you all know is that Eldon and Vampirin are your two oldest buildings. They were built in such a way that any renovation to those buildings is certainly more challenging than the other elementary buildings in your district. And then the capital project work, that, this is a lot of project work. The district is undertaking a big task here in '23. I think what's key here for this is that, again, the district has been very thoughtful in the way in which it's developed those capital projects because they were waiting for the district or for the input from the committee around this whole elementary structuring. So they've tried to hold off a bit on doing work in the elementary buildings pending the review of the work of the committee. I think moving to finance, the thing I would say about that, as you heard my, my history and years as an Assistant Superintendent for Finance and working that whole area, when I looked at a whole host of financials, it's everything I would hope it would be. If I were a board member, I would be feeling very good about what I saw from the financials. You have community budget support. You have well-funded reserves in a variety of areas. You have the assigned and unassigned, trying not to get too technical here, fund balance that's being used appropriately, and you have a full value tax rate that's declining. And the reason that's declining, as you may well know, and I'm sure Kim has talked about it in her presentations, is that your property values are growing at a rate greater than your tax levy that the district has established. So simply put, there's nothing there that I would be concerned at all about, and in fact, I would feel very, very good about those things. On that next slide, a couple of key pieces here in finding 31. Those three years, the reason I call those years out is because those are years in which current debt or projected debt for your newest capital projects will be dropping off.
Hi, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to ask you a quick question in regards to the tax levy and then also property values. Because of the way that property values have been increasing, are a lot of other places in the same situation, or are you not sure based upon?
A lot of other places, meaning other school districts?
Right, 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 other school.
Where there's been building, yes. Not every district is fortunate enough to have the growth in building both commercially or, you know, residential. So, but, but that, conceptually, that concept where if the property values are increasing at a rate greater than your tax levy, then you're going to see the full value, not the assessed necessarily, but the full value of the levy.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, feel free to jump, jump in. I know I may be going briskly through this, but I'm happy to answer any questions. So in finding 31, those are years in which your existing debt drops off. So those are usually little windows of opportunity to help, you want to try to keep your debt load fairly stable. It helps in a variety of ways, and those are times at which you would want to look at perhaps bringing new debt in at those points. Building aid. There's, the district has a building aid ratio of around 88% of approved building expenditures, and that certainly is, is an important number to remember. And the other thing that there's, you know, these capital projects have a very long lead time. I'm sure most of you know, it's, you know, between the time you have an idea of what you want to do and when you can actually start the work, it's generally in excess of two years. So again, probably preaching to the choir on that, and you're probably painfully aware of that. The last two areas that we touched on in the, as far as findings go, would be the staffing and the transportation. This, these, you know, we touched, touched on, is I guess perhaps the best way to put that. Staffing, the years of experience, the average salaries, everything is really within the regional trend. One important piece here is just a reminder that it's the State Education Department that establishes teacher certification areas. And so it's not like the district can choose, well, we want teachers that work in six, seven. There's no such certification area for six, seven, you know, to align with, with your current structures. And lastly, transportation. I think here is what's important about this and the reason we talk about it is that if the district decides that it wants to make some modifications to its grade, grade level configurations or anything else, there will be an impact on transportation. This tells you what it is today here, but there will be things that need to be addressed with transportation, and that is a factor as you start to maybe dig deeper into what you want to do with all of this, this whole topic, with buildings and grade alignment and all of that. So with that, some perhaps fairly obvious conclusions. This is, you may note, is almost the critical question reworded. We do believe that there are ways in which the district can perhaps make some changes to its current grade building and instructional configurations to provide the effective, more effective, relevant, and efficient elementary programming. Just a reminder, again, seems pretty obvious, I think, that changes will take time to implement, a decade, maybe more. And I think Joe is the one that is continued to remind us in the committee that, you know, the children that may be impacted by whatever the district decides to do may not have been born yet. So it's, it's hard sometimes, if you're a parent, to separate what you think is best for your child with the fact that your child will be long off from, from that particular building. So it has a very long lead time with implementation. And I think the last thing we noted there was that ongoing monitoring of these assumptions that we worked on, the most obvious of which is the micron piece. So monitoring and adjustments along the way, this is a moving target, you know? So I think that's important to remember, that those things will need to happen. Before I go into the recommendations, I did want to point out one thing, too. I mentioned building aid a minute ago. I went back and forth, honestly, about whether or not I looked at the aidability, if you will, of the various recommendations that we get into when it comes to different alignments of your grade levels. And I went, I'm not with the folks at Fiscal Advisors, and I just want to thank them for giving me probably, it was probably an hour and a half of their time, and we kicked around various things. But what I took away from that was that it, there are so many variables right now with the debt structure, the debt service structure, and other factors, that I decided not to limit the options that we shared, the ideas that the committee talked about. We decided not to limit them with constraints of building aid. That's, you know, of course, that's an important piece as far as the funding for it. But rather than do that now, which would really be too soon to do it and might, you know, things may change, so we, I chose not to include, not to be constrained, I guess, if, by the building aid piece. So I just want you to know that as we look at that. One of the things we, I think several of you have heard a version of this presentation before. We were here two weeks ago for the Facilities Committee meeting, and we took some questions from them, and Jen went, took it and did a little bit of research. She's going to pull that up. But one of the things that really, I guess, to encapsulate those questions were really about, at what point are those grade level transitions best? And when, when should they, you know, when's the best time to bring, you know, the neighborhood schools that are the elementary schools? When is the best time to start to bring them together as one grade level cohort? And so I'm going to, Jen did the work, so I'm going to let her talk later.
Sure. Thanks, Deb. Yes, so the last time the Facilities Committee, they asked if we could bring back a little bit of research around grade level configurations. I wish I had better news. There is not a lot of research on grade level configurations, and the research that there is is pretty old, 10, 15 years, which in the research world, we consider to be outdated. What we do know, however, is that grade configuration is not a predictor of student achievement or student academic success. So there is no one, we should configure grade levels this way because it is the most likely way for our students to achieve. There's just not that information. The research that is out there has tended to look at the pros and cons of K-8 buildings versus standalone middle school buildings. I will also point out that research on K-8 buildings tends to be in more rural areas where you have one middle school, one high school, one elementary, and the difference between keeping kids in elementary through grade eight and then just sending them to a high school. That tends to be in more rural areas. What we also do know a little bit is that some studies have found some increased achievement in buildings with more grade level bands. So it's better perhaps to have three or four grade levels at one building than it is to have one or two grade levels at a building. That cuts down on transitions, right? But again, in the context of that research, that was done in K-5 and K-6, K-8 configurations, which isn't exactly what we're talking about in the idea of primaries and intermediate buildings. So it's not apples-to-apples comparisons. In terms of transitions, so the research around transitions in schools encourages us to think of transition not as an event, but as a process. How are we going to help students through that transition, beginning before they even move the grade levels, move buildings, right? And so what we know there is it's a lot about consistency. What programs, what policies can we have that can transfer from one building to the next to help support children's transitions through those grade levels? We also know that transitions do tend to come with some academic loss, but that loss is quickly caught up, right? So it's not long-standing. It's not going to hurt per se children to have, to have more transitions, typical children, right? For the most part. So instead, I've offered you up some questions here for you to think about as you think about what grade level configurations make the most sense to you for your students. These include the curricular and instructional needs and goals of the building and for the district, the size and design of buildings, the opportunities for parent engagement and for teacher collaboration. We'll say that we heard a lot from the committee about wanting more opportunities for teachers to collaborate across grade levels. And then what strategies have been developed to ensure supportive relationships between students and adults? So I wish it was a more straightforward answer, but it's just not. And I think in some ways, that's nice because it gives you a little bit of license to entertain more of the grade level configurations.
Thanks, Jen. As we move into the recommendations, I'm going to test your mouse skills because I'm going to jump around a bit. I want, just so, I have you now. One, two, one, two, five, and so we can do that.
Okay. One, two, five, come back.
Yeah, I will come back if we push.
Okay.
It's a test. So moving into the recommendations, there are seven recommendations, and within a couple of them, there's some subsets. So the first one is pretty obvious, to continue to update your enrollment projections, your annual enrollment projections. It's not hard to do. It's just one of those things that districts don't always pay attention to faithfully every year, but in your case, I think it is important to try to do that annually, given the potential for new residential areas, the whole industrial area growth, maybe, maybe industrial industry moving out, too. That was something the committee brought up, is we can't continue to focus just on the micron and the potential growth, but maybe there's some reason to think some, some other industries may be shrinking. The second one is that I, something the committee, we heard very strongly from the committee, is that our recommendation would be that the district undertake a redistricting or attendance zones study. If you look at the last sentence in that, in that paragraph, it's been a while with the attendant zones that you have now, and is there a way to understand if the current attendant zones in any way are contributing to the inequities that we mentioned, that we saw in the data earlier on in the instructional program? So that number two was, was a recommendation that the committee felt strongly. So that number two was, was a recommendation that the committee felt strongly about. So, okay, Jen, we're going to jump through this all the way to the fifth one.
Yep.
Got me. She was there before I was. So another thing that we are recommending is in number five is that, and I know this work, I believe this work has commenced already, but to review the elementary school schedules to make sure that there is equity in the educational experience across the buildings. Committee, we heard from them clearly that their expectation, as would be ours, is that wouldn't matter which building, which elementary building your children go to, that the instruction and the length of instruction and all of that is the same across buildings. So to look at that, because we did find in the detailed report, you'll see that there's some differences in instructional time in the buildings.
Can I just point out that that's not surprising in a district with multiple elementary buildings. Things are going to get off kilter and so just making that, you know, continued effort to double check those things, like I, I can't stress strongly enough, but that is almost an expected finding. So, so not surprising at all.
And number six would be what we, we talked about earlier was the pre-K program. To continue to, to maintain it and look to grow it if there is demand within the district for that, based on the number of students that's in it. If you have waiting lists, then it would appear that there's a demand for more pre-K classrooms. So that's something that's pretty easy to quantify there. Number seven, we'll just touch on briefly here. This, this is one of those where the, this study bled over a bit into the last one. And Jen, I may ask you to chime in again here on this one. But the last study, for those of you that were either here or have reviewed it, talked throughout that study about the idea of a ninth grade annex, standalone ninth grade building. And we, we did not talk about that here. First of all, we did not hear strong sentiment from our committee that that's something they wanted to consider. And there was really no evidence to suggest that that is something that's needed. So elaborate on that.
Yeah, so this actually kind of came up almost last minute with the committee that, oh, maybe we should consider the ninth graders moving to the high school and creating a full, typical high school. As Deb said, none of the data that we collected shows that there is any reason right now to believe that the ninth graders are not succeeding at DIRKI. Graduation rates and dropout rates are beautiful to, for lack of a better word. Culture and climate data that the district is collecting doesn't show that students feel like they're not part of the community. What else did we look at? In general, achievement rates are great. So we really didn't see any specific evidence beyond a few committee members who thought that this would be a good move. But we do think that it's something just to keep an eye on, right? If that changes, if all of a sudden your ninth graders feel like they don't belong as part of the community, or if you see an increase in those five-year dropout rates or graduation rates, then it's time maybe to reconsider that. But at this point, we, we didn't make that recommendation.
Thanks. If you could go back to slide 15, I kind of short circuited the number two recommendation to the second page of those. One more, right there. Yep. So recommendation number two has these three subsets. We are suggesting that you not close or sell or make unavailable for instruction any of your five elementary buildings. And that Van Buren and Alden, this is an ongoing conversation that you all know far better than we do, I'm sure, that it does need to be, there needs to be some updates done to those buildings. All of this, the, this is on the attendance zone redistricting study. Study should be done in conjunction with B and C here, you know, review of the housing and population patterns and capital planning, capital project planning. So just so that, you know, the redistricting study for, for itself is not as valuable as it would be, it needs to be done in conjunction with these other facets here. So with that, I want to move to three. So three and four are where we start to drill into the options. I'm going to, there's a lot of slides, but we're going to take some time on the first slide for number four particularly, explain what you're looking at, and then we'll just hit the high points on that and let you have some chance to talk amongst yourselves. So number three, recommendation number three, which was a key piece of the 2019 study as well, is that our recommendation is to move the seventh grade out of Ray Middle School and onto what we refer to in here as the main campus. And then within that, there's a couple of options that the committee talked about. We talked about making DIRKI be a, a seven-nine building, so which would create, there's two grade levels in it now, making it have three grade levels. We looked at Eldon, converting Eldon to that standalone seventh grade building because it's similar to the discussion in 2019 about ninth grade. The committee seemed to feel, not strongly, but there was enough talk about it that we included here, that perhaps the transition year that's challenging may be the seventh grade year as opposed to the ninth grade year. So the things that the first committee did around ninth grade annex, if you will, we have, we have modified to become a seventh grade standalone building, should that be of interest to the district. So this, number three is about seventh grade. What we will say conclusively is that we believe seventh grade should be taken out of Ray and moved over to the main campus. So moving to number four.
Yep. Just before you move on to number four there. I know in the Facilities Committee discussion, you mentioned, I think, an important point at the beginning about the fact that the committee was unanimous in the fact that our current configuration should not exist moving forward. So I just wanted to, maybe if you could talk a little bit about that before you get into the other piece, just because I thought that was important that we heard
Sure.
From everybody while we're at that committee meeting, or those committee meetings and also at the facilities.
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Jen. Yeah, so we, our starting point really was the recommendations that came out of the 2019 committee work there. And in, within that recommendation, one of the recommendations there, and they did it a little bit differently, they had six recommendations and they ranked them. And so going back to 2019, of their six recommendations, doing nothing or status quo, essentially, was ranked five out of six. So fast forward to the work that we've done over the past six or eight months, this committee also conferred and said that to do nothing is not something we want to talk about. We believe that there are some better ways to do that. We believe that, you know, our elementary buildings are crowded. We believe that there may be better ways to do things and we, you know, we don't want to just do what we've always done. So that they very much were, there were, almost always, there was some amount of conflicting opinions there, which is healthy and it's great. But one of the things that there weren't conflicting opinions about was that to continue doing what we're currently doing is not the best option.
I'll add two. We didn't ask the committee to rank the recommendations or the structures that you'll see throughout, throughout Deb presenting the recommendations, which is different than what the 2019 study did. We did, however, at one point, give them a lot of the ideas that we had heard and asked them individually to rank those ideas, how important those ideas were to them. And this idea was, came to the top. This was one thing that almost unanimously the committee agreed upon.
Thanks. So with that, anything else?
Can I ask a quick question? So, so unanimous sort of feedback from the committee was to do nothing is unacceptable.
Not desirable.
Why?
Well, I think it goes, it goes back to
Overcrowding, I get, but I wonder
Yeah, I mean, I think that's probably first and foremost, but I think there was value, they saw value in the seventh graders being on the same campus where you don't have, you know, you think about it, instructionally, you've got academic opportunities for acceleration if, if they're on a campus where there's already seventh, eighth grade. You have an opportunity to have children that are participating, participating in extracurricular activities. Some of their team is over here and some of their team is here, or their, their, you know, music collaborator is here and the other one's here. So to bring together, to put seventh grade in that environment where they are typically joining with other students at, from varying grade levels, I think. So I think those were the, the primary reasons. Okay. Any others before I, I jump here to fifth grade? All right, so, so in recommendation four is where we start to, to really get into some detail here. And again, we chose not to limit the thinking. For, at this point, you know, I think it's important that you all had the opportunity to look at the ideas that, that came, came out of, out of this work. There's pros and cons to every single one of them here. And, but there, what I can't say is there was no overwhelming consensus from the committee. There were some leanings, I think, but as far as an overwhelming consensus, there was not. So, recommendation number four, to try to hit, we looked at it in two ways. I'm going to hit the high points and then hopefully it'll come together in the end. We looked at moving just fifth grade out of your elementary buildings, which would go, they would go into Ray. And then we looked at the other thing that the 2019 committee did as well, look at moving the fourth and fifth grades into Ray. So all the models that follow presume the seventh grade is going out. They presume minimally the fifth grade is going into Ray. And then there's that option about fourth grade. So let me explain the slides here for a minute. Jen, if you want to jump that up. All right, so what we've done here, and this is something I want to thank the committee members, because we presented it one way and this is what's so helpful about working with the committee, and, and they said, this is just really confusing. So they gave us some really solid feedback and thought that people that hadn't seen this data for six months would never understand it if they were finding it confusing. So thanks to them, I think we have a much more understandable model here. So when you see, these are your building, you see the junior high and there's a key down at the bottom, the junior high is in pink, the, what we're referring to as an upper elementary, because it, with the seventh grade out, it really does not become a, a middle school, correct, Jen? Yes, you're
Yeah, so I think a few things here. The nature of, of the term middle school can be really confusing to folks, especially when no two districts have the same grade levels at their middle school. I also think that parents, and we saw this in the committee, get really sensitive when they start to think about fourth graders in middle school or even fifth graders in middle school. And so one of the things to think about is that if you do make a move to make Ray a four to six building or even a five-six building, is to have conversations about whether different, a different term in upper elementary and intermediate school would be more valuable than labeling it as a middle school. For a lot of people, it's semantics, but I think for parents, it might help to ease concerns.
So
Can I, can I just ask, so, so looking at the facilities differences there, I certainly can understand getting the seventh grade over to the main campus offers a lot of opportunity and that's something that I think one of your first recommendations because it probably is one of the better things that need to be done to improve academics and overall efficiency. But, and I can see then that would give you an opportunity to move the fifth grade to Ray. But if you just move the fifth grade to Ray, you open up elementary spaces for your pre-K. So why, why the consideration of the fourth grade also? What is so important about the fourth grade?
That's a question we, we asked, too. And we, we offered that up as an option. I think one of the things that we talked about is, I think Jen mentioned it maybe earlier, about the continuity of having three grade levels in one building, same number of transitions, but having those three grade levels gives you that chance, gives staff, teacher, staff and students the chance to build connections over a longer period of time, both with parents and with each other, you know.
And also evens out the administrative load a little bit, right? So if in your elementary buildings you have pre-K four, that's, you know, four, five and a half grade levels versus a Ray, if it's only grades five and six, two grade levels for administrative purposes, you know, to even out that load. I would also say that allowing teachers more opportunities to collaborate, right? If you have four, five, six in one building, those teachers, you know, those grade levels tend to be more alike than K one and four, right? So there are, there's some pros and there's some cons here, definitely. But those would be, those would be pros.
Yeah. If I could just chat into you, one of the comments that, we did share this information with the Joint PTA at our last meeting last week, and we talked a little bit about, one of the things that they struggled, and we've heard this over and over and over, is that when you look at Ray Middle School and you look at DIRKI, that two grade level configuration, it's hard for families to buy into, and this isn't why we would make, you know, the decision on it, but to join a PTA and be a part, like they feel like you're just getting comfortable in a building and then it's time to move on, both from the parent perspective and also the student. So when it came up during that conversation, when the committee was doing their work and then, you know, it resurfaced again recently when we were going through these options, again, as was mentioned, there's pros and cons, but it definitely keeps bubbling up about having kids, you know, have those relationships and not feel like they're just moving on.
Excellent. I think Joe, Joe points out something really important here, and that is the continued need to, to get the, the word out and to listen to the community, right? Like, the committee was wonderful. We had lots of really smart people from all different sorts of backgrounds on, on the committee, but they, you know, they represented a small portion of the Beville community. And so the more you talk about and engage with your stakeholders around these ideas, I think the more clear they're going to become.
So let me just explain this, Jen, you can mouse, mouse through this, but the pink, the pink box up at the top is DIRKI. If you see a red outline below it, that means that in this particular option, there is a shortage of classrooms in that building. So you can see, obviously you all know, DIRKI is currently a two-grade level building. Moving it to three grade levels would certainly create a shortage of classrooms. So that's what we're showing in each of these. If Ray, same, same scenario, if Ray is configured to be a four-six, there would be a shortage there. And then in this particular model, this is four, four A, what I'm calling four A dash one, you, it leaves you with four elementary buildings. We pulled out the, you see the count down there at the bottom. Right now, there's 139. You need 104, but 27 of them are at Eldon. So we're saying in this model, they would not be available, but you would still have eight addition, eight more classrooms across the four buildings than you have now. Okay? So that's why that's in green. You have a surplus of rooms. And in this model, this is one where Eldon, Eldon does not have a designated purpose in this model. It's not seventh grade, it's not elementary. In this model, it's actually standing alone for some other instructional use. Maybe it starts off as swing space for all of that construction that you have on the horizon that has been approved by your voters. Maybe one of the things that the committee tossed around, again, the pros and the cons of it, maybe once you get done using it for swing space, it becomes a pre-K building. I don't know. But in this model, that's what it means when it's sitting over there by itself with no specific purpose attached to it. Any questions on this format, because you're going to see that throughout? We've also tried to share some general pros and cons that came from the committee on each slide. Okay? So let me hit that, we'll just keep, we'll through them, Jen, just to explain.
I just have a question.
Yep.
I saw the 27 rooms available in Eldon somewhere.
Yep.
Yep.
How, is, is, how many pre-K classrooms specifically are going to be required?
Well, right, right now, I believe there are 11 in the district. Excuse me. And so, you know, however, and I believe it's 18, 18's, no, no Danielle's back here. No, Danielle's back here. Eighteen children per classroom is the max. So depending.
So for pre-K, we need 11?
11 today.
But we need more, right?
So if we were to look at every, if we were to take our kindergarten enrollment, let's just assume, because in most cases, on average, with our class sizes, there's four kindergarten classrooms in every building, so 20 classrooms across the district, if we use 18 here. So between 18 and 20, you know, so if we assume, you know, we would need at least that in order to meet the needs of all of the UPK students eligible across the district if they took advantage of universal pre-K. Will they all? Likely not, there is families that choose not to do universal pre-K, but, you know, we do have students currently that are not eligible, are able to get in because they register after the deadline, they're thrown in a lottery, and we just don't have the space.
So with that preface, so, let me just, self background check here. Yeah, okay. Option A, I believe all of the option As, even whether it's dash one, dash two, whatever, A is moving fourth grade into RAY. All right? So this is just the same general scenario, except now Eldon, instead of sitting off to the side for a, to be determined instructional purpose, is now actively utilized for that seventh grade. Don't have to build at Durkey, only have two grade levels. RAY you do. So that's green box, green box at Eldon, you've got a couple extra rooms there, red box at RAY, where you need to build. And still results in more available rooms within your four remaining elementary buildings. Okay, so if we move forward, Jen, with that? Okay. So I'm going to jump to B here. All of the B, the B options leave RAY five, six only, I believe. Yes. Okay. And so this one right here, which is B one, is maybe perhaps the simplest option to implement of any of them. All this, all that happens here, seventh grade goes over to Durkey, fifth grade goes into RAY, and you've got your five elementary buildings remaining. Pick up 17 rooms across the five buildings. Okay? And we move to B two. Same general area, except now, idea, except now Eldon becomes back in play again. RAY still stays five, six. The seventh grade, instead of adding into Durkey, now the seventh grade goes into Eldon, which of course results in you having just four elementary buildings. Now, because you still have grade four in your elementary buildings in this model, you are short of rooms. So it would result in some, the need for additional classrooms in some of the buildings. And I think one of the points that I took away from something one of the committee's members said that stuck with me, is that, you know, there's nothing that says, particularly if you look at your, if you do a redistricting or attendance zone study, there's really nothing that says that every single building in the elementary has to be virtually identical as far as the size go. Maybe there's reason to have one have a few more rooms than the other, not ridiculously so, but I, you know, I do think that's an interesting point to consider.
I'll just note, in all those building tours, I think we saw one space in one building that was what I would call like a student social emotional wellness room, which those types of spaces more and more are becoming really typical in elementary schools, and just the fact that, you know, you don't have the space right now for those, and students are having more needs in those areas. So not just in terms of having the space with pre-K, but having some more of those swing spaces for your students as well. And I'll just point out, you'll notice, none of these slides do not require building. So, state the obvious there.
And this is, this is option B three, saying you'll see that, you see the patterns start to occur here. Now, this time Eldon is undesignated as far as its purpose, and five, six still at RAY, four elementary buildings, building additional rooms needed in those buildings. So if we move to C, the four C options, this is where things are, stop on that, okay, that's good. This is where things change a little bit, from what you may have read about in that 2019 study. This really, we weren't headed in this direction in the beginning, at all. But this is, this is what happens when you gather a bunch of people together and say, "Well, you know, give us your ideas, and what if?" So this is an option where you create two upper elementary buildings. So Durkey would go in this model, this is the number one of the C options, Durkey would still go to that seven, nine, but what you've created instead here is two upper elementary buildings. You've got RAY, which now you have a fairly significant surplus of rooms, you've got 16 extra rooms there, even though it's housing three grade levels, because you have a second upper elementary building, which we picked Reynolds that seemed to make the most sense logistically, but Reynolds is short of rooms. And then you have four pre-K three elementary buildings remaining in this model. And similarly to what you saw in A, you've got seven rooms that become available across those four buildings. So the reason that we kind of picked up on this model as far as an idea to share, you may hate it, you may absolutely hate it, say, "Oh, no, just get rid of it, delete it." Okay, you guys can all delete it, that's fine. But we wanted to present it, because what we heard from the committee in different ways, I think, is that, is it, the feeling that it could be hard to go from, you know, having one grade level spread across five buildings, now all of a sudden, and you've done it for years, I get that, all of a sudden into one building. So would that movement be easier if there were two middle schools, or I'm sorry, two upper elementary schools, that gather up the kids in some way from two, each one housing roughly two elementary buildings, okay? So that's the, that's the kind of the new twist that you may not have seen before. But once, once that concept is here in C, you're going to see the same one, two, three options. So this is, okay, this is where Eldon is the seventh grade, now you've got, now you've got a problem here, a bit of a problem, because now you've got extra rooms, a few extra rooms at Eldon, but you've got extra rooms at RAY, short of rooms at Reynolds, but you've only got three elementary buildings to house your pre-K through three grades, and you are short of rooms again. And then lastly, this is, this one that we put there, frankly, I'm not excited about this option, but I wanted to present it consistently. This is probably, unless you have a specific identifiable reason to do this, it feels like you're building unnecessarily when you have Eldon sitting off to the side with an undesigned purpose. But if the district determines that it's important to have, you know, to have that swing space, to have perhaps, you know, I don't know what it could be, we just were throwing out the idea of a pre-K, I'm not saying that's the right way or the wrong way. But this is one where Eldon does not have an identified purpose, just like you saw in, I think it was the A options. So you've got the same scenario where you've got three, this leaves three elementary buildings funneling into two upper elementary, funneling into one junior high. Okay? So, that is, I believe, the end of, Jen, if you want to just go ahead to the, yeah, that. So what we felt it was important to do, and I will not belabor this at all, but just so you know what we did here, the first three columns come from the 2019 Funding the Future Committee. The fourth column, that's got a little bit of a light colored shading there, that is our comments from the feedback we got from the committee, our current committee, and our own thoughts. And you'll see the ranking, remember, we mentioned that the prior committee ranked each of those options, and you'll see how that committee ranked those six options, that's the column on the left. But I'm not going to go through each of those, I think they're pretty self-explanatory. Many of them we agreed with, some of them we didn't, or more importantly, the committee didn't. And I want to end and not, not forget to end with the fact that there's, all of these folks, while not members of the committee per se, we could not have done this work without that group of people right there. First of all, the board for having the foresight, the courage to have conversations and let the community into those conversations. The senior leadership team, the administrators here, most of which I think are around the table tonight, they were there, they were there at every meeting, and that's important to note. They were not part of the committee members, they spoke when spoken to or when asked a question, but that was of huge help to the process, because rather than us saying, "Well, gee, I don't know the answer to that question, let us go find out, we'll bring it back to you." We have the administrative team there, and many times they could provide the answer, just a factual, not an opinion type question, but just more of the factual questions that we would have had in front of us. So thank you to all of you for being there faithfully with us. Building principals, and to Rick, who, Rick led every single one of the tours, he was there for every, every one of those meetings, and with whatever building principal, they made sure they had snacks, water available for the committee members, facilities department for the room setup, you know, I mean, I've worked a lot of years in the business side of the house, and part of that is that whole facilities piece. And I, it's important to me that that work gets noticed, because it happens behind the scenes often, and sometimes it goes unnoticed, but it can make or break a situation, so I want to thank them. Sarah, who, all of this work is out on the website. Every, every meeting is there, after every meeting, I should say, we prepared meeting notes that reflected what we talked about, that's all out there. I think it's been a wonderfully transparent process, and again, would commend all of you for having that, making sure that happens that way. And Kristy, who really was the glue that held us all together, if I needed anything, I called her. So four takeaways, I guess, if you remember, nothing else from my lengthy, lengthy conversation here. We're recommending seventh grade move over to your main campus, fifth grade move out of your elementary buildings. The redistricting slash attendance zone study is important, and we would recommend that get done. And that piece Jen talked about with the consistency across your instructional program, across your consistency of instructional programming across your elementary buildings. Those are, for us, those are the four, four things that are most important that you hear. So with that, I will hopefully run into too much other time, but if you have questions or things that you haven't answered along the way, we would be happy to try to answer.
I think Kristy has a question.
Thank you, thanks, Mr. Jennings. First of all, I want to thank you for this presentation tonight, very, very helpful, and jam packed with lots of data and lots of really great information, so I really appreciate, I think this is going to be really helpful to us in moving forward. Because moving seventh grade into a building of its own would add an additional transition, I want to make sure I understand the research around transitions. And I think the study that you put up, that was the 2018 study, said it takes a couple of years to recover those, any academic loss that might occur, and I was thinking by then, you're ready to transition again, so then is there more loss? So I just want to make sure I understand the research.
Yep, I think you've accurately summarized the research. I think personally, moving seventh grade to their own building would not be my top choice. You know, for all of the reasons that we've talked about, why move four and five to RAY? I think that it came out early in the committee, because it was that idea of how do you get seventh to the main campus, so that they can be with everyone else? And if, you know, if you didn't want to build onto Durkey, then that could be an option, is to put them in their own building. I think it also came up early because of looking at the prior report, and the ninth grade academy idea, somebody said, "Well, what about seventh grade instead?" And we all went, "Oh," right? Like it was a moment of, well, we hadn't really thought about that. But that would not be my first recommendation, for all of the reasons that we've talked about.
Yeah, we included it, I mean, and you might be now saying, "Well, why did you even include it?" We included it because we heard from some of the committee, again, if you think back to what I said about, there really wasn't, you know, we wanted to represent, accurately as possible, represent the feelings of the committee. There were several, more than one or two, that felt putting seventh graders in with eighth and ninth graders could be troublesome for the, for the seventh graders. Different maturity levels and all of that. And, you know, the conversation about seventh graders are kind of their own, their own, their own animal, so to speak, they're unique in some ways. So that kind of bred that idea.
I think too, that idea initially came up when we were thinking about multiple upper elementary buildings, so that if seventh grade was the grade where they all came together for the first time, maybe giving them their own space would be a nice way to do that. But I think Deb is right, we really wanted to try and illustrate all of the options that the committee talked about.
Well, this is a lot of thought, like Kristy said, some really good meat to consider. One thing, you know, you want to make the best possible choice, however, building A will be a reality that we'll have to deal with, because it costs millions and millions of dollars, and without state funding of that, we will not be able to carry up through that. So from a facilities point of view, I certainly buy into your idea, the seventh grade, I think that's essential. But the other change that would require, I believe the less facilities disruption, is having the joint four, five, sixes, because RAY doesn't require much, and Reynolds would require some addition, which might, you know, this whole scheme of things, we might be able to get that money for Reynolds sooner than others, because you're kind of this five-year plan with, I mean, you know, there's so much detail to this stuff. What, what do you think about that type of situation where you're, you're bringing people together earlier, you bring them together in grade four versus grade six, but you've got two, two groups that don't come together till seventh? You seen anything about social adjustment, and, you know, developing cliques and whatever that might be pro or con for that configuration?
Yeah, so I mentioned earlier, after Joe talked about the PTA meeting, how important is it going to be to talk to your Beville community? But I also would encourage you to go talk to FM parents, talk to West Hill and West Jenny parents, and, right? They all have different styles of working through this too. You know, FM has three pre-K four buildings, two five, eight buildings, and then a nine, 12 building, right? So that's similar to what would happen if you went with two four, six buildings. You know, talk, talk to other community members as well, and really think about what have experiences been like for them. I will say, too, the idea of one school, one elementary, one like brand-new, beautiful school came up for a hot second, and the community was like, "No, too expensive, we're not doing that." So I do think that the building A thing is something on the committee's mind as well.
No question for probably more Joe or Kim. When it comes to that building A, and debt fall off and planning, obviously, if we were to say, tear down a school and build a brand-new today, it would have to go for vote, it would have to be approved, planned, built, and we're talking five to seven years from now before we see that. As far as that debt fall and school aid reimbursement, when it comes to renovating, say, Durkey and Reynolds, and adding those classrooms, knowing that there's already been renovations, knowing that you have a certain period of time before you can renovate that building again, is there any restrictions with us actually adding 18-plus classrooms to either one of those buildings or any other buildings that year 10, if we started today, that could not happen?
Yeah, so there's a number of factors, and after this meeting today, what we'll proceed to do is to talk with our fiscal advisors. to do is to talk with our fiscal advisors in regards to make sure we maximize aid. So, just to compare what you were saying about building a brand new structure, there's a lot of areas that aren't aidable because they're not used for instructional purposes. So, that's why it becomes very costly with building a new school and there was hope that they may adjust how they look at that because of, especially because of our situation with Alden and the MPRN. You know, and that's something that we can still explore. In regards to renovating, that is an area that we're using right now, right, for Derby, we're using those funds. So, there's a lot of intricacies in regards to how the building aid comes in and planning that out and that's why we have a number of consultants and, you know, appreciate Deb talking to our fiscal advisors who sit down with us and say, this is what makes sense. When we had been talking about this previously, one of our strategic methods, as Deb mentioned, with the projects that we have out already, is these are all projects that are going to be sustainable no matter what we do with the lower grade levels. So, that's why we've been moving forward with these projects. However, one of the bigger discussions that would take planning is that when we get into these, they all intermingle, they all impact each other. So, that was one of the discussions that we've had a little bit over the past year and why we brought in the committee, was to say, okay, well, if we get into the point where we're restructuring all of these buildings, then we need to look at how we go out with a capital project differently because we can't go out this year and then again next year and what if one of them doesn't go through? So, there's some models that our consultants have talked to us about, Sam's had, Sam's like us, I've heard this story before, in regards to going out with a large project and then taking the time to explain to our community the phasing that would occur to make sure that we're still maximizing aid. And we have some documents that we can start looking at and sharing with you in regards to how the debt falls off, the maximum cost allowance we can utilize to its fullest in pushing all of that stuff out. That's a lot of detail where that we're probably going to be able to get into tonight, but we definitely have a lot of those documents started already because we've had those discussions.
And we did put on the executive side of Board backs this evening, that long range facility spreadsheet, which has the maximum cost allowances for all of our buildings and when they resell is, you know, if we're not the facilities committee, others are not, we, when we just received approval for the Durkey project from the commissioner, that five year window just reset. So, we can't get back to maximize our aid at Derby for five years from this January. So, when you think about, again, going back to, these things take so much time, that's why it's important to think things through. One of the things that we're doing right now is taking, with Danielle's help, with her experience with Canva, which helps us graphically represent all the things that we're thinking, is we're trying to go through and make some of the graphics that we have in the final report a little bit easier for just the general public to understand. So, are there specific configurations that are maybe resonating a little bit more with each of you as board members? We can start there first as we continue to have these conversations because we know that we're going to have to have, you know, multiple diagrams that are describing what it is that we're looking to do to make it easier for our community and for all of you to make a decision. And part of that will be, you know, dates and times when we can get back to a building. I do know just from looking at, we can do work right now at Reynolds and Palmer and McNamara, those are buildings that, you know, ultimately, based on when construction was last done there, we have some of the maximum cost available. So, you know, going to Kim's point, you know, thinking about those larger projects, can we, you know, lay out the plan that ultimately people would buy into when they know that we're maximizing the funding stream in order to make this work?
Just to jump on that, you mentioned which one is resonating. Conversely, if there's options that you say absolutely not, we tried to structure it so that it would be pretty easy for you to just take those off the table and narrow that, narrow that focus.
Just a quick question, I was thinking of the simplest plan you kind of put out there at my before C where you only have to run out of the Durkey because you do, you just moved the fifth graders and then the seventh grade up to Durkey. Did the committee consider, so that, that simple plan kind of leaves you only doing construction on one building. Did they consider, you kind of mentioned it at the beginning, that they didn't consider nine through 12 at the high school, but if you had to pick one building in that scenario, you potentially could do nine through 12 at the high school and then seventh and eighth at Durkey and only move the seventh graders and the fifth graders, did they consider that at all?
No.
Okay.
No, they didn't, they didn't consider that. So, we, we very much were focused on that elementary piece. It's not to say you couldn't do that, you could not, you certainly could put that back on the table. Obviously, I would be shocked, we didn't look at your high school at all, but I would be surprised based on what we saw, it's where you would need to do some significant additions to that to accommodate another grade level. And I don't know what your, your clock, your building aid clock that Joe was just talking about might be on that building, because I know some of this work that's on the, on the docket here for, for completion is, I believe affects the high school.
So, the most recent project that was approved this past May, the majority of the work would be field work, the gymnasium, science classrooms, and the pool, that hasn't even been submitted yet to SED. So, until the commissioner approves that, you know, that building aid restart isn't, isn't, you know, so I would say maybe by the end of the next school year, we'll have submitted and possibly received approval from the commissioner, but the lead time right now, it keeps getting greater and greater.
So, the lead time is quicker on Durkey than it is on Baker?
Yes, yeah, for eight, yeah. I think going to Jeremy's point would be, you know, this configuration here, we're only adding on to, to Derby and it's less work across the district. I just want to make sure it's clear for the board. That doesn't mean that there, if, if this is the model that the district moves forward with, we know we can't get back to Derby until 29, right? There will still be work being done in all of those other buildings because we know that we cannot function even if the grade level configuration changes to PK or four at Banbira and Alden, because of the inequities, there has to be work done. So, again, going back to our, our model of trying to maximize the, the building aid and the fact that we have these periodic resets, you know, we can still do work in those other buildings. So, even if that's the design, there will be construction in other buildings because we have to in order to make sure kids are getting the last experiences that they, that they deserve.
I think it's funny, we walked through our elementary buildings and even though John kept reassuring us that the classrooms were the same sizes from one building to the next, they just didn't feel that way. You know, whether it was because the ceilings were low or, or what it was, you know, the hallways were narrow, there, I think those things kind of impact your teacher climate and culture, right? They feel like their spaces are crowded, they feel like it's more difficult to do small group work in spaces where, where they don't feel they have the space to do that, even though John and Rick assured us many times that those classrooms were the same size.
I just have one more quick question. The options where you have two upper elementary schools, we have to do construction in Reynolds in order to provide as many classrooms at Reynolds as at Ray, and Ray has extra rooms available, so is there a reason you put thirty-six rooms in each of those and you didn't just put more at Ray and?
So, that's a great, a great point, and I think to Deb's point earlier, that not all the elementary schools have to be the same size, right? Your two upper elementaries wouldn't necessarily have to be the same size. You would need to think carefully about how you split those schools, right? If you have four elementaries, it's really easy to send two and two, but if you have one that's much bigger than the other, you have to think about one and a half and two and a half. So, those are just some other considerations, but I don't think there's any reason why you couldn't think about that.
Yeah, I would agree.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that the whole scenario reminds me of that little puzzle we had as children, where you had to slide that tile and then slide the other tile, but knowing what you were trying to do, because with the aid, you can't touch Durkey, but you can start some building, some construction at one of the elementaries with the idea that, that slide will come up because your timing is, is going to be very strategic and, you know, the architects' office are going to be treading up at that point.
Yeah, so, you mentioned one of the four takeaways is, has to do with the instructional time across elementary buildings. My assumption is that whatever the instructional time is, split up by discipline and the grade level, we're still, we need state requirements for that, is that, is that a safe assumption?
Yeah, yes, yes. Yeah, some, some buildings start a little bit earlier, right, and some of that's based on transportation, some have longer blocks from that than others. Those are the types of things, but yes, you definitely need those state rights.
So, I'm trying to figure out that, are there, are there any deltas, are there any differences between, in outcomes between buildings?
There are slight differences in outcomes between buildings, but not enough to say building X is really in trouble, right? Nothing to that degree. You do have some of your buildings, and I won't remember off the top of my head, have more students of color, more students special ed needs, more students from low income families who tend to have more needs than other students. And I think to the committee, that was another reason why to look at the tenant zones and redistricting, but in, in a matter of saying one, one building is performing far less than others, no.
And is there any way, even with the small delta, is there any way to actually tie that to the time, the instructional time differences?
So, another thing you might consider is, is an instructional audit, right? To look at, how are we using our time? How, how is using time across buildings different? But I, I would hesitate to say that any of those are tied to the time differences. I would have to go back and look at the full report, but I don't think so.
The reason I'm asking is because obviously, you know, we don't have the same kids in all of the buildings, right? So, I don't know if certain decisions are made because of the types of kids that we've got in certain classrooms or certain buildings and maybe, you know, five minutes here works better with this group than that group and, I'm not, I'm not sure that, than I understand the details of the significance of.
I don't think that there was enough pattern to call out any, right, like, that this building is getting more time on math for, because they have more students with disabilities. I didn't see any connections like that.
Great, thanks.
So, that, that data is in chapter six in here, if you really want to drill into it and, you know, it, it becomes fairly clear how that's a little bit off between buildings.
Well, again, thank you so much. Very, very thoughtful, you've great insights and a lot of discussion ahead of us, I think, right? So, well, thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you to all of you, and if you certainly have any follow-up questions, even though our work is officially done, we'd be happy to entertain them, so.
Thank you.
Can I just say something quick, I'm sorry to interrupt. Jen, that information that you had on that Microsoft Word document, would that be something you could send to us?
Absolutely, Joe and Kim already have.
It is. Okay, perfect. Thank you again.
Thank you again.
Just before we transition into the budget, just a reminder for the general public that are watching, so we do have a community cafe next Wednesday, which is centered on this topic. So, we'll be getting some feedback through the thought exchange, the community cafe, the options that are, that are listed here and, as, as you know, it's going to be an ongoing conversation, but, you know, we'll continue to have that backlog and see where we end up, just knowing that, you know, at some point, there will have to be a decision. Hopefully, we have enough data to make a decision. We'd suggest that you register online and then there's snacks. It is, yes, we do, we register online so we know who's attending and there are snacks for those that, that's the reason.
Okay, I think our next item was the little budget overview.
Yeah, so I'm going to have Kim pull up the, or I'm sorry, pull up the document, I'll get us kicked off. So, we're actually, we did not make a lot of changes to the presentation from the December eighteenth work session. What we did is we added slides based on the revenue and a few pieces that we, we left off at the prior work session. So, if we could just go right back to the second slide for a moment, what I wanted to highlight, which I did not highlight last time, when you think about our district's goals for this calendar year as well as our strategic plan, all of the work that we have put into this proposed budget really does center on our strategic plan. So, when you think about the, the priority areas of providing students with project-based learning experiences, you know, use of cutting-edge technology, enhancing our teacher qualities through professional development, improving student achievement, safety, security, exemplifying culturally responsive diversity and equity, all of that ties into, to our budget. So, when you think about our goals, when you think about our plans, our presentations from the building level, this budget does support that. It maintains our programs, it enhances our programs through the additional components that we talked about at our, at our last workshop. Just to highlight the process again, we've had a fair amount of involvement. This is, we're hopeful that on the March fourth meeting date, that we will have you adopt the budget and then we'll be able to move forward with our budget presentations and getting this information out to our, our community. We go to our next slide, there's the overall breakdown in how we are spending in this proposed plan, where all of our allocation tends to focus and you'll see, and not surprisingly, instruction, instructional component of the budget is the, the largest component, most significant. We couple that with student services, athletics, technology, and that's everything related to the programming that we provide our students. On the next slide here, we're going to highlight the, the changes from our last presentation. So, on slide six, we, as you recall, maybe, our goal, we had a budget to budget increase that was greater than what we wanted to on our first run. So, we've been fortunate enough to take another deep look at the proposed budget and we've received some good news with regard to where we will be with employee benefits and some adjustments in workers' compensation. And so, we're able to reduce by one point three, six, seven million dollars what we had proposed at, at our last workshop. So, that is bringing us more in line with a budget to budget increase of, you'll see on a later slide, just over four and a half percent, which is close to the CPI for the, for the year. So, when we look at our anticipated revenues, and Kim can definitely chime in here at, at this point, so we've received the governor's runs, the governor provided the runs back on January sixteenth. Surprisingly, what we know about these, these runs, I know I shared a lot of information with the board in the Friday letter, but just for the community, you know, when you look at what is made publicly available and then what the media, the newspaper, everybody puts out there, what the governor puts out there related to the percent increase in state aid, it never ends up being that. As a fact, for us, when you really start looking at the analysis of that run, our foundation aid is actually less in, in her proposed budget than we were receiving in this current school year. And while we're thankful for the significant increase we received in, in this year's budget, seeing a reduction for twenty-four, twenty-five, I'm, I'm hopeful that the legislature will come through with, you know, action that's not going to make those changes to the state aid formula because it doesn't help our district, the so-called full harmless provision would be, would be removed and, you know, at a minimum, you know, we're not drastically losing students, we're pretty stable with our population. In fact, our enrollment has actually increased over this time last year by close to a hundred students across the district. So, the fact that we will be receiving a, a reduction in foundation aid just doesn't quite make sense. in foundation aid just doesn't quite make sense, um, in this model. So more to come on that. The other areas that we've highlighted here, where you see a reduction, high cost, high, uh, cost, excess cost aid, we're projecting more based on our work with BOCs, and that's for, um, any, there's a threshold for students with, uh, label as having a disability. Uh, if, you know, Kim can give you the exact number of the dollar amount, but any cost that's above that threshold, we get, uh, we get aid back on that, just to try to level the playing field, given the fact that, you know, the cost for, um, students across, uh, the state varies from district to district for students with, uh, having disabilities. And then the other area, we, we back off about $500,000 is in transportation, because in order for us to get aid on that transportation, it's for the, the cost of doing that work. And as you know, we, we place a lot of fund balance in the transportation area for, um, not knowing where fuel, so we can't get aid on that if we're not spending that, that, uh, that funding. So that's why you see that reduction. So overall, um, you know, you'll see, you'll see that, uh, we're looking at a general, um, building aid, um, subtotal of about $55 million. When you add the building aid in, we're around $60 million. Um, the other area that is misleading, that is in the governor's run, is UPK. And, um, you know, we don't have enough classrooms to accommodate every single student. We're gonna reapply that, skip, so we don't.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep.
Last year, we were given 1.1 million dollars. They're increasing that to 1.9 million dollars, but we're not gonna see any of that, because there's a per pupil expenditure, and we just get a multiplication of that based on the number of students that are in the program. So again, it's not the two-point, whatever percent, uh, it looks like to the public that we're getting an increased state.
And you'll see here too, that we pulled that down, because that is actually a grant. It's not actually part of our general fund. So I just wanna make sure we point that out as well. But when you look at the budget runs from the governor, it's embedded directly in the run. That, if you didn't realize that, it would be another point of confusion.
So there are questions on the analysis of the state aid figure. Again, we're hopeful that when the legislature comes through, we receive additional aid. Uh, historically, it's always been that way, that the governor's run is usually, you know, not as lucrative for, uh, the district, nor the legislative run. So if we go to the next slide, uh, you'll see the budget summary. Uh, so what we're anticipating with our pilots, anything that's highlighted in yellow, again, is we anticipate could change, uh, and, and, uh, as the potential for there to be some variation before you eventually adopt, uh, March four. The next slide is going to give you an indication of where we are with appropriating our fund balance and our reserves. Uh, so you'll see an increase there. Uh, this year, we appropriated a 1.6, a little over 1.6 million dollars. Next year, we're anticipating to help balance that budget, uh, with 2.6 million dollars. So an increase of about $1 million in appropriated fund balance. The one, uh, area that I want to highlight with this is that this is actually bringing us back to the funding, appropriated fund balance, um, that we, that we did prior to, uh, the COVID pandemic. So we were able to not appropriate as much fund balance, because we're receiving the American Rescue Fund, um, resources, grants, basically, uh, from the federal government and the state. So, uh, those have, have gone away, and, uh, again, we're going back to where we were pre-pandemic, uh, with our appropriated fund balance and the use of reserves. With this spending plan, uh, we're looking at a tax levy, uh, of sixty, just over 65.5 million dollars, which brings us to a tax levy, uh, cap of 3.57 percent. That is where it stands right now. We have until March, or entities have until March first to submit for pilots, which ultimately impacts our tax cap. So as you know, from, we, we wanna go out to the cap, which is at 3.57 percent. We went out to the cap last year at 2.85 percent. If we don't go out to the cap, we're basically leaving, um, money on the table that could ultimately, we, we never make up. Uh, so I think what's important to highlight is on the next slide, even though we're, we're showing that there's that 3.5, uh, percent of balance that we've got, that budget-to-budget increase of, uh, 4.56 percent. And the next slide is going to give you the historical tax rate increases. And I think this is important to highlight, because historically, we're estimating based on where we are right now, you as a board set the tax, um, and approve all that, the warrants in, in August, so we don't even have all that information. But if you look at that trend, where the actual, you see that, that negative percentage compared to where we're estimating currently at the cap.
So, so how we've got, so like, in 2023 versus 24, we estimated 2.85, but it came in less than that. Is that correct, or?
Yep. Uh, and we're, we, and Kim can speak more to us.
Yeah, yeah.
On the next slide, it's gonna highlight that even further.
Right. So what happens is when we're projecting our lighting number, we're projecting over the total property assessments that we have right now, taking equalization rates into account. We don't have the actual new property values to push that levy over until late July, early August. So because our property, and this is back to what Deb talked about earlier, because our property assessments continue to go up, that's what's creating that. And this year, it's even a little more confusing and concerning to me because of the equalization rates not being fully assessed anymore. So now you're taking that 90 percent, not 90, but in the nineties, there was different rates. So that's even gonna create another, um, confusion for people, because you have to make sure that all of the towns are equal. So if you think about Clay, we have to account for the fact that their equalization rate is very, very low, and make sure that we're pushing the proper amount of that tax levy back to the town of Clay. So it's becoming more complicated by some of the changes that are being made. But that's, that's why this is happening the way it is. This is one of the benefits, I'm gonna say, of the tax levy cap, because the cap is placed on our tax levy, which is the total amount that the district is gonna take in as revenue. It's no longer on the tax rate. So many, many years ago, if that was still in place, we would not, we would continue, that chart wouldn't exist. We would go out with that tax increase on the rate, and it would even be more money than what we anticipated getting in. That's not how it works anymore, and I still think there's some confusion out there about that. So when we're talking about, you know, some of the other things that come up, the tax levy is the tax levy. And obviously, we can continue to provide that information, and we talked about doing, you know, some mini clips that reference to videos and things like that, similar to what we did last year to try to help explain that. And we're always open to input of the community and our board members to try to help us message it so that people can understand it. This is complicated. It's, it's not easy to understand, and then your property values could be going up, which is different than our tax rate. It's the tax rate's applied to that number. So there's a lot, a lot of moving parts here, and I probably just confused everybody, so I'll be quiet.
No, but, but yeah. So what we're doing is we're building a, a budget based on last year's, uh, assessment numbers. And, and then what'll happen at the end, when we have our budget, at the end, they're gonna plug in this year's assessment numbers, which have been higher. So although we say three and a half percent increase, it may not be three and a half percent, it'd probably be less. And, and you saw on hers, she said, like, five years ago, it was $23 and something per thousand, and this last year, it was $18 and something per thousand. There you go, 1861. See, nineteen and, and eighteen, nineteen is 2373 per thousand, and now we've come down to 1861. But of course, what happens is your tax bill probably didn't go down, because your assessment, like mine, was going up, so.
The only, uh, difference in, I think that we've always been curious, because last year, across the board, there was no reassessments. So that gave us, uh, a better picture of how much actual growth we had in this community with businesses, new housing, et cetera. And I, you know, was just getting quickly back to one of the weekly letters, uh, in July, we got that, that, um, dollar amount. And, you know, just in, in the year without any assessment or reassessments, there was over $400 million in, uh, new assessment growth, basically, uh, in our school district, because.
Assessments grew 400.
400 million.
So that had to be, so there's no reassessment, that's all new built.
Correct.
So basically, with that, again, I'm just trying to dumb it down and make it so, so if all the property assessments weren't changed, nobody's property went up, yay, everybody's paying the same, our budget goes up. But because there's growth, there's new buildings, there's new people moving in, and when you move in, your house gets reassessed, because you usually buy houses for more these days. Um, with that growth, in the environment where nobody's property or homes are reassessed, we could still see our tax rate per thousand decrease, just because our district is expanding. So even though the budget's going up, every single individual taxpayer's piece of that pie could significantly go down, depending on the growth.
That's correct.
Yes.
And that's what's happening. And I always use the example when we were going out last year, uh, my own, you know, and I have to go back and look, but, you know, my assessments historically have gone up quite significantly. But if I look at what I would, am paying currently in this school year for school taxes to what I was maybe, you know, five, six, seven, eight years ago, there's not a drastic difference. And, and in fact, you know, in some cases, there were years where I was paying, uh, more back then than I, than I was currently, because of, even with assessments going up, just because of the, the growth in, in the area. So that's, you know, what will happen with Micron, and will there be additional? And there's a lot of, um, uh, residential, um, plants, uh, the Kriego Farms, there's a lot on the docket for the town of Imburen, the town of Lysander. So I just don't see growth not happening moving forward.
But I want to try and understood this. Are we not gonna know those actual numbers until July, August?
That is correct.
That's right.
When you set the warrants in August, yeah. We'll know like end of July, when we received them last year.
Very, very end of July, because you figure they're doing their reassessments and going back before. They don't release that information to us until, literally, we usually edit about a week before we're asking the board to put the warrant up.
Okay, that, I mean, that's the new portion of, of where we stand currently with the budget. Um, if we go back a couple of slides, Renee, uh, just, I wanna go to the summary slide for the appropriation. One more. Actually, one more back. So our, our bottom line right now is where we are with the budget, the 135, um, million-dollar budget. We don't see that number changing. Again, it supports all the things, the great things that we're doing with our students. If we get additional state aid through the legislature, uh, what we would be looking to do is just ultimately, at this point, unless the board feels differently, is just reduce either the appropriated fund balance or the appropriation from reserves. So we really feel like the bottom line number that we have currently, um, is, is doable, uh, and it's consistent to, to where we've been in the past.
But we're, we're gonna be voting on a 3.57 increase, because that's our tax cap. And you do not go over your tax cap, because all your staff people don't get their money.
Correct.
So just.
And you need a, a higher budget.
But just to keep in mind, like I drove up to this one, this is a preliminary tax cap number, because we still have some moving parts that are out of our control. So we will not.
Pilots.
Exactly, the pilots. Um, so there, and there's definitely some things that can still be in the works. And literally, as Dr. Barry mentioned, they're, they can get pilots up until the very last day of February, and we have to submit this on March first. So obviously, we can revise it, um, but, you know, to the point of you wanna maximize your tax levy, because leaving those dollars on the table impacts you exponentially. And I think that probably even has more of a meaning after the discussion tonight about how it used to apply to a tax rate, and now it's a tax levy, than that. So if you're leaving that over time, it's, it's not a good thing to do. Um, and just to kind of bring all of the pieces together real quickly, part of the discussion in regards to those capital projects impacts this tax levy number and the tax cap calculation that we put in place. So that's why we talk about making sure we have debt coming back on when we have debt falling off, or that's gonna impact us not in a good way. So it all ties it together, the analogy of those little pieces, those little pieces just got smaller and there's more of them.
Those little pieces, I will stay alive. The idea of little short videos that can be, that, what's a levy, or it's a rating, uh, and just to kind of just break it down real simple. Some of these parts and pieces and little parts, I think that would be extremely helpful for, for everybody.
Yes, you can do it Schoolhouse Rock style.
Okay. Any, any other questions for Joe or Kim on?
The only, the only other thing I wanted to mention that was related is a continuation of our conversation at the, the last meeting at the roundtable was the, um, exemption. So in the, on the executive side, you just received today, if you take a look, um, in there, all of the, the exemptions for our region, uh, our OC and BOCs regions, uh, with, with regard to the, um, veterans, the volunteer fighter ambulance, and, um, disabilities and limited income. So that document, you'll see that there are, there are basically only two school districts that I know of, as it stands right now, uh, that you'll see on that, on that document, that provide those exemptions. And that's, I mean, you can, one of, one neighboring district and the other one a little bit further away. But for the most part, um, the majority of our schools in the region are not, uh, utilizing those, uh, exemptions because of the discussion that we had at the last meeting.
And that discussion is that when you grant an exemption to one person, it takes that tax, those tax dollars, and you redistribute it over everybody else.
Correct.
And so being of the mind that the fairest thing is just to not grant exemptions and let everybody pay their, their share. Been kind of our philosophy, I think.
Yep. That, that's how the district has operated in the past, and certainly the board, you know, that's up to the board, you know, ultimately, to make a change to that if you feel that's necessary or not.
Although there's some people that think that EMTs that work in helicopters are giving, I'm not sure.
It is a very small group of people.
It is, it is. Very small, very small, so.
This is a group, small people. Small group of people.
Got it.
We like the small group, we hope they go forward.
So, uh, one thing we should talk about February third very briefly, is that is the.
Oh, yeah.
CMY, so maybe just, uh, remind it.
Yep, so on, on Saturday, February, or from eight to, I believe, eleven.
Eight or nine.
About nine, sorry. I was getting in there a little bit earlier. Uh, is the OC and BOCs Legislative Forum. So Meyer, Shania's, uh, most of the legislators, uh, senators, et cetera, state folks are planning to be there, from what we heard from Southern Arab School Boards Association. And it's an opportunity for, uh, boards from across the region to weigh in and advocate for, obviously, changes, changes hopefully to be building aid formula that is different from what the governor proposed. Uh, so, you know, Christie can register the board. I know I'm planning on being there. A few members have already, uh, registered through Christie if you're interested.
Maya, I think, might be interested in that too.
Yes, and she left.
I told her about it.
Okay.
I told her to just talk to her, and she's.
We figured that'd be a great opportunity for her to, to meet up with some of the, um, state lawmakers, given that they came up in one of our discussions.
We'll probably carpool over and show people who are interested.
Right there, I'll, 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 I'll do this, like. Sorry, how we do this, like?
Well, if there's nothing else for the good of the group tonight, that'll call it into our work session, and thank you very much. And look forward to seeing you on February 3rd, if not before. Thank you.